Work session order. Thank you, everybody, for being here. As I asked staff prior to the meeting, we are going to actually go into executive session prior to 6:00 PM. So I'm going to ask the staff, when you're covering your agenda items, if you will be as brief as you can, and whatever we miss, we can always cover it again during the regular meeting. So who wants to start us off? We don't have any items on the work session agenda, other than committee updates and department head updates. I guess I should ask, I know we're at the end of the month. Do you have any committee updates, Councilman Robinson?
Counselor Boone.
And I don't have any committee updates either. So let's just go ahead and jump directly into the department head updates.
I'll knock fifteen, or fourteen, excuse me, out real quick. It's just a compliance issue that's a reoccurring thing that you have probably looked at or familiarized yourself to some degree with, and I am, I'll answer any questions if you got anything, but item fourteen is mine, it's the only one I've got.
And that's a, that's safety training?
No, sir, it's regulatory compliance, so they handle all of our state and federal regulatory compliance.
And that's all budgeted?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel President, I have agenda item number twelve, which is the section street resurfacing from Bayou to Fells. We'd ask you to award that bid. It is under budget by a significant amount. And also, we're asking you to award the additive alternate for Magnolia, from North Bancroft to Church Street. As you know, we've had underground electric project, as well as our utilities permanently set services for Arts and Crafts Food Court, and thus, there's a lot of cuts on that road. So while we're, take the opportunity to do that as well, and even with that additive alternate, we're significantly under budget.
Does that resolution, I'm trying to get to that, does that resolution include the addition?
It does, yes, sir.
Find the actual resolution there real quick. Do I have any questions for Richard on that item?
And that will be night paving. So that'll be, it'll be interesting, but we're going to figure a way through it. So thank you.
Yeah, I'm still, gotta get used to the big book here. Jenny, where do you actually put the resolution in here?
It's actually within the tab.
It's within the tab?
Maybe on the backside.
So if you flip to twelve, it's the second page, on the back of the second page. Or I actually, on the front page.
There it is. That's what I was looking for. Okay.
And that five fifty-two, Councilmember L, covers the base bid and the add alternate, so that amount is both of them.
Right, that's kind of why I wanted to look at that, that resolution. Did we need to say that it includes that?
And if you flip over to the page behind the resolution, it has highlighted the total bid amount, which includes the base bid and the alternate.
Well, if the resolution has the correct amount for both, anyway.
It does.
Okay.
All right, Chief. I've got item twenty-one, application for liquor license. Everything checks out on that, if you have any questions.
Do you expect anything on, there's a public hearing on item five?
I'm not, no.
Okay. So we have that public hearing, we can move for final adoption after that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that doesn't lay over like a normal?
It doesn't, yeah.
Okay. Any questions for the chief?
Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
I have item number fifteen, the roof on the fieldhouse in the stadium with the recent storms is pretty much shaken loose and is leaking pretty severely in both locker rooms. So we are just asking that we shift some money around in our capital improvements budget. I have one hundred and forty-four thousand budgeted for sage structures at Valana, and we anticipate using about forty-five thousand of that money by doing the work in-house.
Is that an insurance claim? Will that be an insurance claim?
I don't believe so, no. Because we can't pinpoint it to one specific incident. With recent storms, the metal has just worked its way loose.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for Pat? Thank you, Pat.
I've got item number thirteen, and this is a change order for the sixteen and twelve-inch force main project, to purchase two new valves, twelve-inch valves for the eastbound force, twelve-inch force sewer main to one eighty-one.
Got any questions for Darryl? You got any other items, Darryl?
No, sir.
All right. Easy night for you, isn't it?
Yeah, it's about time. About time.
How's it going? I got agenda item number eleven. It's the citywide tree trimming for the raising the canopies on the roads in the subdivisions. The contractor that we had, that we were awarded the bid to, is not honoring their price anymore. So we have to put it back out for bid.
Okay. And I understand that we only got one bid on that first time, right?
No, we had, I think, at least two, if I'm not mistaken, and they were by far the low bid, and the other one was extremely high. We went with them, and then they started looking back, and they made a mistake, and they did a, an hourly rate instead of a day rate. So they are not honoring their bid anymore.
Okay.
We're going to do a better job this next go-around of making sure more local contractors have an opportunity to bid on it. If I'm not mistaken, the last, both of them, the one that is not honoring, it's from Baton Rouge, and the other one, I don't remember where they were from, but I don't think either one of them were local contractors.
Okay. Any questions, counsel? Questions? Okay. That it?
That's it.
Got a light duty, too.
That's right.
Just got all the work tonight. Eric, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
Hunter?
Number ten is just to accept the award from the Safe Streets for All grants that we applied for. It's, the grant is a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Our match is going to be sixty. This is going to develop a safety, a comprehensive safety action plan for the city to include bikes, I mean pedestrians, bicycles, traffic, what have you, everybody, every user. And then, the idea with the SS four A grant is that with this plan that we develop, there'll be strategic projects that will come out of that, that we can then go back and apply for implementation money for.
Sounds good. That's a thirty percent match, if anybody wants that math on that real quick. Any questions? Okay.
Counselman, I have eight and nine, but we don't have fever done.
Okay, were those the only two you had?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mayor, if we have any questions about the DirecTV Video Services Agreement, we've covered that, I think, in the last work session, and that's a final adoption.
We have, and Greg Kinder has reviewed that and made a suggestion.
Right. He's blessed everything on that, and I know he's on it. Okay. Okay, Kim, what you got?
Number twenty, that is to have a formal capitalization policy, and I put in front of y'all, so y'all will be able to see it. You can see the letter that came from our auditors. That is, we cannot find a formalization policy. This is just basically a policy of, in writing, of what we're currently doing in place, currently right now. We just need one formally, that y'all have approved, voted on. We just couldn't find anything since I had been here, that there was an actual, you know, council action policy. And this will just be-
I've been trying to get that passed for twelve years, and Councilman Boone keeps taking it off the agenda.
Better late than never, huh?
This will be another check off from the auditors, from listing it on a letter to the mayor.
Okay, awesome. All right. Thank you, Kim.
I was just going to say, if you need me to cover seventeen, eighteen, or nineteen, those are all related to the library renovations on the second floor. These are contracts that, because it's a city contract, needs to be on the council agenda, but it is funded by the Friends of the Library. And then, number nineteen is a bunch of surplus items from the library, the second floor, that we will be moving into the city warehouse, and we'll gov deals those, or share those with departments that might need some of the furniture that they're actually surplusing.
That was on nineteen?
That's correct.
Okay.
And Jeff Montgomery is not here, but number sixteen, he covered that at the last meeting. That is to do a contract with the consulting company that has basically employees, people who are knowledgeable of Tyler Technology products, which we have, and a consultant to be able to help us do some training here for our employees, when it comes to Tyler Technology products.
I thought he said, I think he said it would not only be better, but it would prevent us from having to hire another employee as well.
We're going to, it's a one-year contract, we're going to try that, instead of hiring an employee, to see if this will work for us, and, I mean, we have such a diverse area of need, that we're hoping that these folks who are consultants will be able to answer that and do the training that we need, so we wouldn't have to hire an employee.
Okay. All right, I'll take just a few more minutes. Counselman, do you have anything else you want to bring up? Mayor, do you have anything else you want to bring up? Okay. With that, I'm going to go ahead and end the work session, and we're going to go into our regularly scheduled meeting, but we're not going to go too far in it. So if I may, is Pastor Pat Davy here? Are you here? You are, Pat, that's what I thought. Okay, Pastor Pat Davy is here, from Eastern Royal Presbyterian Church. If you'll all rise, he's going to lead us in our opening prayer tonight.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Let's pray. Father, thank you so much for, for this group, for this city council. We thank you for Mayor Sullivan. We thank you, Father, for the beauty of this place, where we get to live, and thank you for these that are just investing their lives in governing and bettering our community. And we pray you would direct the entire meeting, pray there would be just a great spirit here, great unity here, and that all the decisions that are made here would lead to the flourishing of fair hope, and we ask this in Christ's name. Amen. Thank y'all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor, and thank you for getting here so early today, too. We appreciate it very much. Appreciate the prayers for the, for our city. They are, they are definitely needed. Okay, counsel, I would like to ask someone to make a motion to amend tonight's agenda to move item twenty-three, the executive session, to item three. It'll actually be after the report of the mayor and before public participation. Can I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to move item twenty-three to number three.
Second, have a motion in a second. I don't think we need any discussion on that. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, the agenda is amended, and item one on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting and the work session held on May thirteenth. You have any additions, deletions, changes to those minutes? There being none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as submitted.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. 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 Okay, motion carries. Mayor Sullivan, your report, please.
I have no report tonight, thank you.
Okay. All right, so with that amended agenda, I have a letter from City Attorney Chris Williams. I'll read it, and we can decide whether or not we want to go into executive session. Says, "As City Attorney, I, Chris Williams, hereby request the Fairhope City Council go into executive session based on Alabama Code to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation. Controversy is not yet being litigated, but imminently likely to be litigated, imminently likely to be litigated, if the governmental body pursues a proposed course of action. As City Attorney, I hereby request that the City Council of the City of Fairhope rise from regular city council meeting on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, 2024, to go into executive session. The city council shall be in executive session for approximately, say, one hour, for approximately one hour. At the end of the executive session, the city council shall return to the city council chambers to resume the regular city council meeting." Can I entertain a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second, have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, we will go into executive session and try to be back in, in an hour. And so what we're going to do is, we're going to continue on with counsel comments, and then we're going to come back to public participation and the public hearing, because the public hearing was advertised as starting at a six o'clock meeting, so we don't, we don't want to get ahead of that advertisement. So I'll go ahead and ask council members, Councilman Robinson, do you have any counsel comments for tonight?
Do you want me to have some and take about ten minutes?
I'd like for you to take about three, and I want Kevin to take about three.
I don't really, I will say that we hosted two All-Star tournaments in Fairhope this past weekend, six-year-old and ten-year-old. I haven't gotten to speak to everybody that was there, but I did hear that those tournaments went really well, and that the fields looked great, and the people were very happy with what they saw, so Pat, kudos to your group for that, and I'm hoping that means we can host some more tournaments in the future. Keep me from driving to Simpson Grand Bank. That's it.
That's not three minutes, okay. Councilman Boone?
Well, I'd like to chastise the council here for not participating in the employee luncheon we had at the bay, because it was a very nice situation there, catered by Billy's. Barbecue was just great, and it was a great appreciation to the employees of this fine city that do such a wonderful job for us, and make this town look good, make us look good. Hope everybody appreciated, and everybody got fat and hung, I mean, fat and full, because I did.
And who, and who was it? I mean, I was there. You're getting on, you must be getting on to Jay, because, uh-
Well, if anybody else was here, I would be.
I mean, because I, because I ate, I ate a whole lot.
Did you get there on time?
Yeah, I was there.
I don't believe you did.
I sat next to you.
On time, on time, he's on time.
I got there before it was over.
Matter of fact, I show up thirty minutes after the meeting, that doesn't mean I was here on time, if it was at the meeting.
I didn't want to-
Hey, hey, y'all, we can't let Jimmy and Cory think that we need them here for this to run streets.
I did not want to-
Well, let me ask you, did you have a good time?
I had a great time. I didn't want to cut in line, I just knew I was going to be at the back of the lines, so it was really, no, no hurry. I had a, I had a few meetings with other citizens to take care of some city business, so I was probably running ten or fifteen minutes late.
But it looked great, appreciate you being there. And again, I was mainly to appreciate to the city employees how much we do appreciate them, and how much fine work that they do around this city. We thank y'all very much.
Yeah, I thought it was good, and I thought that Billy's did a great job, and I do, I want to say that, you know, we were invited to the American Legion yesterday. I know the mayor attended a ceremony at the American Legion, I always try to be there. I was not in town yesterday, so I hope that went well. Mayor, you want to expand on that, any? See if you can take up a couple of minutes of time with that.
I'd be happy to.
We're stalling people, if you're watching, by the way.
The, the American Legion hosted a Memorial Day program, which they do every year, and it was really nice. They did that, and also, the Ball and Pops did a concert last night on the bluff for Memorial Day, and just really appreciate those community organizations hosting something, you know, in remembrance of Memorial Day, and, you know, in honor of our servicemen and women who've made that ultimate sacrifice, and their families. The Elks Lodge also did something, so really thankful for those community groups that do that, and really, the Ball and Pops, too, because they have so many volunteer musicians, and just appreciate what they do, you know, putting on these concerts for our general public. The city was a sponsor of that concert, so just, again, really appreciate them doing that. It's such a nice setting there on the bluff, with the Tears of Sorrow, Tears of Joy statue there, and just a really nice evening.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that, Mayor. We've got about three or four minutes. I really don't want to get ahead of public participation. I think I can take a chance, I'm going to make the decision to move on to item six, and then we'll back up. So let's move to item six real quick. That's final adoption of an ordinance, amending ordinance number fifteen oh four, and ordinance number sixteen thirty-two, authorizing and granting the second addendum to DirecTV LLC to Video Services Agreement, which was introduced at our last council meeting on May the thirteenth, and I know that our, our technical consultant for the city in these matters has blessed this, and he's looked it over with a fine-toothed cone, or the mayor's looked at it. I know that I've looked at it, and he said that it's good to go, and we did talk about this in length at the last meeting, so I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, Clark, will you call the question?
Council President, pro temp, place one.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number seven, having to deal with the adoption of the new personnel handbook. I know that the mayor is still working with staff, they want to dot a few i's and cross a few t's, and she's still getting a lot of valuable feedback. We want to make sure that everybody's on the same page, so I think what the mayor's asking us to do tonight would be to table this ordinance until the next meeting. We could, we could table it again if we needed to, if it's not ready in another two weeks, but I'd like to entertain a motion to table final adoption of the ordinance repealing ordinance fifteen ten, and adopting the new personnel handbook. So, second. Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, will you call the question, Clark? Well, do we have to call a question to mo, from a motion to table on the ordinance? We don't, do we?
We do not.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item eight is an ordinance to approve the annexation of territory within the city limits of the city of Fairhope, and various rights away within Montrose from the Baldwin County Commission. Would somebody like to introduce this ordinance, please?
I don't know.
Okay. Hunter?
How much time do you need me to kill?
A few minutes.
All right. This is a pretty simple, we've been discussing this for quite some time. Actually, this property annexed, the surrounding property annexed in quite some time ago, y'all familiar with the development known as the Montrose PUD, it was first seventy-seven lots, was recently amended, I believe, were seventeen lots total. This is actually the request from the county to accept the right-ofways for ownership. The exhibit within that ordinance that is on the screen right now, there is a difference between the right-ofways and the roads. The right-ofways are shown in red. The road, the only road that the city is maintaining, and we have no intentions, I want to be clear on this, as y'all recall, but certainly some public concern, the PUD says we will not open those right-ofways, improve those to our traditional standards. This is not the, your average topography out here. We do allow a private road on some of these, or options of vacation, or other things, as they get preliminary plat approval. The only thing we will, we'll be accepting that the county currently maintains, and we've had them, this request actually came to us almost a year and a half ago, they've went and done a lot of digging, make sure there's no, there's no cooperative maintenance agreements or any permits, and this dash line from Adams Street down the Third Street right-ofway is the only thing they're currently maintaining, and the only thing we would maintain as part of this. There is some asphalt within that right-ofway that's twelve feet lanes that we will be maintaining, and then the preliminary plat we have approved in March with the Planning Commission splits, I believe, this block into three lots, so as part of that subdivision, eventually, there will be an acceptance of the road there, and that is the only thing we intend to maintain within this right-ofway of any kind. I may come back to you and actually explore the options of vacating some of these in the future, but right now, in front of us, is accepting the right-ofways for responsibility under the city of Fairhope. So any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Any questions, counsel? All right. We'll let this lay over for final adoption to the next council meeting. Okay, it's a few minutes past six o'clock now, so let's go, we're going to go back now to public participation on agenda items. This is for agenda items only. If you'd like to address the council, on agenda items nine through twenty-one, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll be given three minutes. If you have something that's not on tonight's agenda that you would like to talk to the council about, you'll be given that opportunity and public participation at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Seeing no one for public participation for agenda items, I'll close public participation for agenda items, and we will move to item five, which is a public hearing. This is for the application for lounge liquor license by Michael Manis, Ramp Enterprises Incorporated, doing business as Cottage Hill Package by the Bay, at ninety-eight sixty-nine State Highway one oh four, Suite B and C in Fairhope, Alabama. Chief, do you want to give any opening remarks on this? Is everything in order with this application?
Yes. I'll think about that.
Okay. I'll open up the public hearing. If you'd like to speak to this lounge liquor license, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, if you'd like, I'll entertain a motion to approve the application.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. We've tabled seven, we, I believe, are on item nine, which will be site plan review and approval. Hunter?
Yes, sir. This, I'm going to kind of move through, we've seen this quite a bit. Hilltop PUD was a project mostly residential, shown, phase one is shown on the left-hand side on our zoning map. It started, began in the city, annexed in, and all along, there was a desire for the purple triangle on the right to be a limited commercial use within that PUD. If you recall, we, the PUD came back for an amendment, just about a setback, and what you see in front of you is the site plan that follows that up. This lies, and there's really nothing significantly different than what we've looked at before. There's a little bit more clarity, and we appreciate those projects, it's not in a huge rush, and get through that, that detail as needed. I really don't have any, anything, I can answer any questions, but for the sake of brevity, I'm going to kind of move through this. Everything met, the Planning Commission unanimously approved this. You can see a little bit of what the visuals look like in the architectural elevations. I do want to say this, something happened, a little unusual during the Planning Commission meeting, there is a ten-foot required buffer on the south side of the property as it abuts the, I believe that's Battles Trace, phase seven? I can't even remember which phase, but it's Battles Trace. The applicant actually came and requested that we increased that buffer, and wanted it to be a condition from ten feet to fifteen feet, to give a little bit more privacy to those folks in the, from Battles Trace. We didn't, the Planning Commission didn't fill it like that, it was a condition-
We didn't, the Planning Commission didn't feel like that was a condition that needed to be done, but we would certainly make sure we alerted the council to that voluntary change. So with that said, the staff and Planning Commission recommend approval of S case SR 24.01 with one condition, and that's the signage plans shall conform to the sign ordinance. We did not review any specific signs under this application, and if you have, this is not a public hearing, so if you have any questions, I'm happily...
Happy to address those.
And we do have someone with applicant here if there's any questions.
Questions for Hunter, counsel? As Hunter pointed out, I think we've been going through this one quite a bit, I believe I was even on the Planning Commission when this originally came through, and it passed through the Planning Commission unanimously, and I think it all involved, did a great job with this, making it very clear what was going on with that for the betterment of that community there. So with that, with no more questions, I'll entertain a motion for the site plan review and approval.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Just a comment, I want to thank the people that were involved in that for making that, making that easy on the city. Some of these don't fly through so easy, so. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item number 10, City Council authorized acceptance of the USDOT Safe Streets for All, known as the SS4A grant for $140,000, and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to sign all necessary documents. The goal of this project is to develop a comprehensive safety action plan within the city limits to prevent roadway fatalities and serious injuries for all users. The city's match on this would be $60,000, which is a, which is a 30% match. Counsel, do you have any questions for staff? Do we need staff back up?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item number 11 is a resolution to rescind resolution number 5020-24 awarding bid to number 24-23 citywide tree maintenance annual contract and authorize the rebid of this purchase under the Code of Alabama 1975. You can see this section there, and I believe that the winning bid, they would not honor that price because they made a mistake, and believe they put in an hourly rate in the place of a daily rate, and so obviously that would come in extremely low. The other bids had come in much, much higher, and that was the reason why, there was an accident made, so I will entertain a motion to rescind the awarding bid.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item number 12, this was from Richard, this is a resolution to award the bid for resurfacing of Section Street from Fells Avenue to Value Drive to Asphalt Services with a total bid proposal not to exceed $552,287.47, and this would include the add-on cost to also, let's see, let's see, also includes the alternate project of Magnolia Avenue from North Church Street to North Bancroft Street. We did receive three bids, and this is the lowest bid.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? We talked about this at length in the work session tonight. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you. Item number 13 is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan has hereby authorized to execute change order number two for bid number 036-22, the pump station enforced main maintenance, phase two, with a cost of $18,630, and to award change order number two to A-Long Boring Incorporated with a new contract total of $4,883,310. And Darrell had briefed us in the work session on this, I believe. Darrell, you said this was adding a couple valves?
Yeah, it was a small oversight.
Right. Yeah, and no matter how large that contract is, we can't be expected to receive $18,000 worth of valves, or almost $19,000. Do I have any questions for staff? If none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to execute change order number two. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item number 14 is a resolution, the City Council approves a selection by Mayor Sullivan for professional consulting services for natural gas pipeline distribution, compliance to pipe suite, a division of pain management incorporated, and authorizes Mayor Sullivan to negotiate the not to exceed fee to be approved by the council. This is some compliance-related items, it's also a budgeted item, and I believe that Wes covered this in detail in the work session. Does anybody have any questions for staff?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the selection. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. The motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item number 15 is a resolution to approve the procurement of roof replacement for the football fieldhouse at Municipal Stadium from Roof Doctors for a not to exceed cost of $36,750, and to approve the transfer of budget funds and capital improvements for the project. Mr. White briefed us on this non-budgeted item in the work session, it is leaking pretty badly and probably needs to be replaced pretty quickly to avoid further damage to the, to the facility. Any questions for Mr. White? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the procurement?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 16 is a motion that Mayor Sullivan has hereby authorized to execute a contract with Global Solutions in Data Services for go-between support for the City of Fairhope and Tyler Technologies and other supporting applications with a not to exceed amount of $40,000 and have the Treasury to transfer up to $40,000 from IT salaries in their FY '24 budget to IT professional services to cover the cost of the support. Jeff was not able to attend the work session, but as the mayor briefed us and reminded us that Jeff had told us about this at the last work session, that this would also allow us, for a year at least, to not have to hire someone to provide these services, this technical support, and we'll reevaluate, this is a one-year contract, we'll reevaluate the benefit of this service at the end of the year contract. I get all that right, Mayor?
It's correct.
Okay, anybody have any questions for the mayor? Okay, anybody want to entertain a motion to authorize the execution of the contract?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item 17 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the procurement and installation of shelving units for the library's second-floor renovation that are on the TIPS Cooperative Contract with Aurora CO, is care of inner space architectural interiors, and therefore it does not have to be let out for bid with a total purchase amount of $80,893.52 plus additional freight as needed. And I want to say that items 17, 18, and 19 tonight are all related to library expenses, and these are being funded by the library, these are not actual city expenses, but they have to come to council for approval. So anybody have any questions for the mayor on item 17?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, have a motion to approve, and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you very much, counsel. Mr. Chickle, we're way past your item. It got approved.
It got called, that's great.
Yes. It didn't go over 15 to get it, I hope. Okay, all right. Well, just to let you know, congratulations, and we appreciate you working with the city on that, so you're welcome to stay, we've got a few more items to go through, all right. Item number 18 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves the procurement and installation of shelving units for the library's second-floor renovation that are on the Alabama statewide contract with Affordable Interior Systems, um, a care of inner space architectural interiors, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a total purchase amount of $38,388.50 plus additional freight as needed, and as aforementioned, this is being paid for by the library, and it's just a formality, the city council has to approve this payment. Can I entertain a motion to approve the procurement?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the procurement and the installation of the shelving units. Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item 19 is a resolution, certain items are declared surplus, and the mayor and the city treasurer hereby authorize and direct her to dispose of the personal property owned by the City of Fairhope by one of the three methods listed in the resolution, and if you would like to see that, look in your book. Can receive bids, it can be sold for scrap, or it can be disposed at a landfill. You should have a list, page 455 of your book tonight, page 455. All right, I'll entertain a motion to declare those items surplus.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item 20 is a resolution, the City Council approves the City of Fairhope Capital Asset Policy as submitted for adoption. This was recommended by our accountants, and Kim, our treasurer, was gracious enough to brief us during our work session tonight, and you should have that capital asset policy in front of you. Do you have any questions for Ms. Creach? And once again, people, if you're watching online, if you're in the audience, we went through all of these in the work session tonight, so if it looks like we're going through them in a hurry, that is correct, we are. I will entertain a motion to approve the City of Fairhope Capital Asset Policy as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Are you going to let him make a motion tonight, or is he going to, you're going to do all...
I made a few.
Have you made, have you made one?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, he got a, that category.
All right.
Sure play well with that.
Item 21 is an application for a beer wine on-off premises licensed by Michelle Proudie Johns of Corner Copia Gardens, doing business as Corneal Copia Gardens, 13477 State Highway 181 in Fairhope, Alabama. Chief, everything in order in this application?
Okay.
Any questions for the chief?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. All right, public participation, if you have anything else to bring forth before the council that wasn't on tonight's agenda, or if you want to go back to an agenda item, if you'll come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, you'll be Okay, I see no takers, I'll close public participation. We have already been into executive session, so I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, thank you, we're adjourned.